We're gonna start this thing. It's a workshop. It's not a city council meeting. We do have an agenda. We are going to go through the previous planning, the 2016 comprehensive plan. Basically, take a look back, talk about the January six project, Henderson Feathers, Hummingbird Center update, trails, et cetera. First order of business, though, I want to congratulate Nancy and Kelly for their... Nancy, did you see that?
No, it's just Jack.
Kelly, stand up. Anybody that doesn't know Kelly is the new owner of...
Awesome.
Got my husband and I, my husband is Brian. He just got here yesterday. Oh, he's good.
All right. Jeff, are you ready? Are you gonna do the comprehensive plan? Or do you want to do your... Turn the light out a little bit. There you go.
Coffee.
Yeah. Is that okay?
I didn't bring out comprehensive plans. They're pretty large documents, but I don't think I'm standing up to be able to keep up going off of here. A lot of you guys that are in this room were here, maybe whatever it was, 2015, 16, when we did our last overall planning effort. That's got the cover page there. I just included, just so you can see, the depth that went into the summaries here. But where writing we're at is at the implementation part, which is the last five or six pages here that are attached. It goes through what we actually did, and Doug and Dana and those guys have done a bunch of these things as well, but basically strengths, weakness, opportunities, and threats analysis. And at that time, some of the key things, and really, this was adopted by the city council in 2016. So it basically was city staff and city elected officials marching orders at the time. And if you look, you can see the various percentages of things that people thought were important throughout their planning process. The first one being downtown area with commercial and historic preservation, see housing, transportation, trails, and tourism and festival kind of thing. And then, kind of the three main categories that really the city council needed to take on based on this directive were working as hard, or whatever method they could use, to do something for flood protection, to do some things on roads and highways, and to do some things on, at that time, high-speed internet. And if you could turn back the clock to 2016, 2016, we were still in RS fiber mode. I mean, that's when we were with Sibley County and Ringo County and all. That, of course, went by the wayside, so the RS fiber, I mean, the high-speed internet stuff has gotten included now with various other companies that are involved in the process. But just for my quick review, I think you can, I think the city, the city community has been pretty successful in dealing, it's not complete yet, but they all look at the flood protection stuff, I mean, along with that, the roads and highways. If you look at what we got going, I mean, within the next year, two projects, north and south, that are going to deal with flood protection and are on the boards that's happening now. And by the end of next year, after the current street project is done, there's not many other blocks that are going to be left in town and to actually do. So most of our streets are actually there. And I don't know, this was information from Keith, I don't know, Tim Becker is gonna want to touch on it at all, but I think Tim is looking at doing some stuff on County Road Six as well here at some point in the near future. So as far as those topics, I think, I think the city and the community have done pretty well in covering them generically. So hopefully, now this kind of starts the process for future city councils, future city staff, community members, to figure out where they want to go and what they want to do there. The next one, if you've got the graph, are showing all those things. I don't want to go through the implementation process too extensively, but I'm just gonna give my critiques, and you get some things to do with them as you want. But historic preservation, which was the first one, that rated real high in those surveys, quite honestly, that has not done well. I mean, since COVID, we've basically, in Henderson, kind of shut down all our heritage and historic planning. I mean, a Joseph Brown group has been pretty much in fun, other than paying the heat upstairs for three years. We haven't, our historic preservation committee, while it's still alive in name, hasn't really met more than a few times for three years. We haven't done a designation or anything since the Kiawah project and doing the Joseph Brown House on the south end of town. So that's been 2018. And just food for thought here, as you go through what you're thinking about and conclusions you're gonna come to, I did talk to Michael Poop today, who is the state historic preservation guy, and basically, he wants to, wants to know, does Henderson still hit on historic preservation following state methods or not? He doesn't really, he's not gonna push anybody, not gonna do anything, but if we're not, basically, just let him know, and he'll take us off the list and do whatever, because you're supposed to do a designation once a year, and we haven't done any now for five years probably. You know, we're supposed to do a couple of projects a year, we haven't done it in five years. So you kind of gotta decide if that's important or not, kind of, you do have to decide if that's important to you or not. Housing, I'm not gonna get into all those things, but some of them are on the table, some of them are being talked about now. I mean, that is progressing, but just for your own review, if you look, this is what you guys came up with seven or eight years ago as your goals, some of you have accomplished, some of you haven't. The next one, economic development. There's just some cursory things that have happened with that, but the community, we don't, the city does not have a set economic development policy or program or whatever. It hasn't, the city council has functioned as the EDA, but the city council hasn't met as an EDA in four, maybe five years, longer than that probably. They've only given out two revolving loans in six or seven years. So you really have to decide whether you want to keep that going, or you just want to keep that as is. Parks and trails, when you go through, there's actually two pages of that. If you look through all this, the community, to me, has done a hell of a good job on that. I mean, there's a, there's a lot of action teams, a lot of committees, a lot of trails going on, a lot of planning going on, and after you hear some presentations tonight, I think then city staff and the various groups hopefully will have some direction and directive as to where to go with some of that. Community facilities, haven't done much on this building, which is, or the city garage or whatever, but that's kind of been a back burner kind of thing, but that may dovetail into some other projects that might go on here in the next, that might get planned in the next couple of years. Infrastructure, again, a lot of, some of that, a lot of that's been accomplished, is in the process of being accomplished. After this project is done, most of all our water mains are gonna be up to snuff. Sewer veins, for the most part, mostly replaced. We've still got some infiltration things and some other, some other, some other things that storm, storm drains. So with that, I do have also in here, and they may be of some use for you when you refer to some of the park things that have to go on. This is our current, the first one is our current trails map that's in our master plan for planning with Kiawah and things like that, and kind of ties into, kind of ties into a lot of the things that Tim and the rest of those groups may touch on. And then the next one is the actual project that we've got going on right now. If you look at the things in yellow, by next summer, when that project is done, that'll actually all, that'll actually all be trail. So those, that's, right now, what you're seeing with the streets all dug up and whatever is the installation of the water and sewer and the underground, but when, but when that project, that, when the actual blacktop and concrete and whatever all goes on, that yellow part will all end up being a trail and then tie into hopefully some of the things downtown. And just, I don't know, this is, when you see the stars, though, there are overall major theme crosswalks that'll go through, but the blue part, that hopefully will all get completed with the next 93 projects, which will come after the flood mitigation one. I think probably, what the state is saying fiscal year 2028, which might be 2028, it might be 2029. And at the same time, you're going to back up on, at the same time, the things to the north, and that's the trail stuff that Doug and that group will get into, but if you look at the Kiawah, the yellow dot, that's kind of there, will be, the city will be applying for another transportation, AT grant, I guess they call it, to get that, to get that pink part done with, and tie into Doug and Tim's Hummingbird Trail project, and then, but the rest would all loop around or whatever. Basically, what you see on that map is overall the concept right now as to what a major parks grant application would go in for. The city council approved that here in the next couple of weeks, in December and January. Yeah, the others covered, it's in here, it's somebody else to deal with.
Jeff, do you want to give a brief summary of the...
Brief?
Brief. Brief as you can. Important subject. I apologize for the bad projector. This is my backup. I don't know what happened, but I think I might have to sit down. This will be the first time that the city will be briefed on last year's design team planning session, which took over a year to put together. Right Dana, Doug, jump in. I'm really not the expert on this. I was at some of the meetings, and I was the one that just handed the presentation, which I'm showing you. I'm gonna fly through these slides and just grab a couple of things that I think were really of importance to some of the groups that, at least I'm on, the roll-in and the chamber. This was their goals and mission, not important right now. Who was the design team? They're made up of architects, urban designers, economic development specialists, really good people, if some of you met them. Maybe some of you hosted, were host families as well. They used to be called the AIA, the design team. So there was a planning session back in the 90s here. I wasn't here. Keith's nodding his head. Now they're called the...
Minnesota Design Team.
The what?
Minnesota Design Team.
The Minnesota Design Team. They've helped a lot of communities, so they're under a different name, that's why I'm not listed in there, but we are in 2022. At the end of the, it was two and a half days, and at the end, they put together a presentation, which we're looking at now, and they put together these drawings, giving us some ideas of things to look forward to in the future. These are the people that were involved with that, a lot of the planning group on the left, the host families, because we did have to house a lot of these people. There were 13 or 15 of them, and a lot of contributors and volunteers. Yeah, I think it was 13 or 15. Okay, they took a survey, and they asked a lot of the community set of questions. I just want to hit on a couple of these things that I found interesting. What kinds of services, places, or activities would you like to see in Henderson? Bakery, deli, cafe, number one. Got that? What kinds of people struggle to find housing in Henderson? Seniors. Well, they're, after this, another committee was formed to talk about senior housing, and that's going on now. Improvements you'd like to see for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motor, hiking and biking trails? Well, like Maun said, there's a big effort to do that now. I found this interesting. What's the most important social connection you have in Henderson? Volunteering was number one, and obviously, the roll-in was number two. If your taxes went up $250 per year, I think this is what Steve Silman ran on in his campaign. What ability would you support? Street sidewalk maintenance? That's going on now. Hard to see, but they...
My backup one.
Oh, boy.
The other one, the other one, we, probably now, we did have some questions on the water quality part of it, but it probably isn't as good now to hit on. There, part of the water quality stuff that the city is doing is the replacement of these lines and changing pressure on it, doing whatever. But the other, we don't have a part of a presentation tonight, is there is, there is multi-pronged effort out there to try to get six to seven million dollars in funds from the state and federal government to do a filtration plan. Representative Harter, I think this year, in this year's bonding session, is gonna introduce a bill for some funds, and there is something in, there's something in, we had it in the Senate and the House of Representatives, but the House of Representatives, it got dropped out, a request for a little over $4 million, but it's still in, it's still in the Senate version of the, of the, what do we call it?
Appropriation.
No, 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 it's, it's, there's a name for it in the Senate, in the Senate request.
Direct appropriation.
Yeah, congressional, congressionally directed spending. It's in the congressional directed spending part of it, of it, and Henderson, one of many projects that are in there. But so, we should hear something, whether we get kicked out or not, of that, but if we do, then the city will just have to apply again in 2024. But there are, there are two separate things. One going on, I can't imagine that Representative Harter and Senator Hagan won't introduce the request in this year's bonding session, and it'll also, if it doesn't get funded by the Senate this year, then it'll go in the 2024.
They put together a map showing our downtown assets and trails. We did use this a lot in planning for the other trailer, we're gonna talk about to the north. They really highlighted the nature trail, and so I know the city has that in their plan to get that fixed, but they really talked about that at length, that you've got a little trajectory here and you're not using it. Safe routes to school, I don't know much about that side, hard to see. I found these interesting. They did a set of drawings of a lot of things, and most of them are sitting up here in front of the road. This one in particular, they said, it is really clear that we can see your strengths, your identity is a hummingbird and a classic car. And so they just threw together, put together some drawings showing what the entrances into your community, which would show your identity, what those could possibly look like. I thought that one down below would be awesome. There's some things, I've got the, I do host a Henderson website, there's some changes I'm making, heard their suggestions here, so we're working on that. We're working on the public wifi, which is not working currently. They had some ideas for the courthouse square. I don't know much about those, but there's some interesting things. Just having other people look at some of the assets that we have and coming up with some ideas was fun to see.
There was a pair of students that came to the presentation, and they asked them questions about what they would like to see, and this came out of that.
Even that net trappers, is that like a Spider-Man competition? What is that called?
They were basically asking for a skate park.
Another interesting idea about the community-centered perspective, like the parking lot that's not, that's a parking lot, a church parking lot, and some kind of facility going up there. But, on the other hand, parking's very valuable to downtown Henderson. I can't, I don't really see that happening, but it's still an idea that could be used somewhere else. I won't get into some of the street stuff, but they really did look at it, what, and I'm sure we're gonna look at this a lot once 19 is rebuilt, which is...
And I should say too, that one thing recently on, originally, that was gonna be like the 2025 project, that of course goes all the way to the 93 project, it's not gonna happen for probably 2028, but with that now, I'm pretty sure what's gonna get included is Highway 93 as well. So basically, 93 and 19 will be redone for any traffic access, streetlights, decorative thing, you know, whatever. So there'll be a whole planning process that will go along with that, and it'll probably start three or four years before the project starts, so I would guess sometime next year, maybe at the latest, early 2025.
Did you say streetlights?
Yeah, streetlights, streetlights go with that.
Correct.
Sidewalks. Sidewalks. Everything, basically, everything on Main Street, that's on Main Street, will get replaced.
Okay.
So...
Sidewalks. Yeah, I see, they're all out of coal. Yeah, yeah, it's a cold project, it's a, but they're, they, what did he say? He's not decided yet on whether it's gonna be 10 ton from here to Taylor.
Oh, okay.
But that's what he was, when he was here last time, when he presented, when Forrest was here. And that might, that's another thing, as this process goes, you might want to start going with some of those meetings and emphasize that, would he use a good thing? But yeah, it will, when the new levee gets put on, a new road gets put on, then basically those three or four intersections that go from, there won't be three left after the new one gets put on, but those three then will all be redone with sidewalks and relapse and anything, whatever.
We talked at length about housing, and there is now a few committees talking about housing. Housing, housing. Interesting ideas of what a hummingbird center would look like. So coming out of this planning session talks about a National Hummingbird Center. I think Maun hits a lot of this in the city's comprehensive plan. Housing, water quality, yes. I think we are looking at all of those things. I don't even know what that slide, how to interpret it. And then the goals. I have this, this slideshow is so big, it's so hard to put up online, so I'm not sure what, I'll have it, if anybody wants a copy, I can try to get it together instead of trying. Okay. Since I'm here, I'll roll into the roll-in. Okay, Mayor?
Sounds good to me.
This will be the first time, I think, we've really talked about the roll-in at the city council level. But with the complications we're gonna have in the next three to four years with road construction, I think the roll-in is probably more important than ever, to kind of hold our downtown community together. It's been successful, I'm gonna show you a little bit about that. And we do have 18 events. I mean, it's a quite long event in itself. Some of this is slideshows from, that I have given our volunteers. I don't need to tell you what a roll-in is, you all know that. But just a little bit of where it came from. Back in 2009, it began in August and September, and with 25 cars attending each event. And now, the event has 18 consecutive Tuesdays major September with an average of over 300 cars attending. And back then, it was just a handful of volunteers, and now, we've created a nonprofit with 11 board members, and over 70 volunteers helped out last year. We do keep stats, we register, we try to understand who our crowd, who they are, where they're coming from. I know it's hard to see. There's a couple of dubs we had in there, August 22nd, we canceled that because they extreme heat, but we had a great year. Overall, it was a fantastic year. And you can see October 1st was a record in this community to have over 650 cars and probably a couple of thousand people. Maybe I'm putting that lightly.
Don't forget about the motorcycles, too.
What's that?
Don't forget about the motorcycles.
No, we know they're here. I just don't know. Just an idea of who they are. You can see the 169 corridor, showing that we've got a heavy influence coming from Bell Plainie, Mankato, Jordan, Prior Lake, St. Peter. So it'll be interesting to see if these numbers change starting next year, when both accesses from 93 and 6 are under construction. So it's gonna be our challenge to try to keep this thing going strong. And just back in 2016 is when we really started counting how many cars were attending, and you can see that last year was our biggest year, on average, 321 cars. With the help of the U of M, back in 2017, we put together a study to understand even further where the demographics of this event, and how much people spend in it. And in 2022, we updated that with a survey of our own. We had over 415 people respond to the survey. I thought it was interesting to show that how long people are staying when they come for the roll-in, and on average, it's two to three hours is the biggest piece of that pie. And I thought, we always thought this question would be great to know, are they coming, will they come again, even without a roll-in event going on? And they are, overwhelming. How much money do you typically spend at the roll-in? The biggest piece of that pie is between $20 and $30. So, and I did take and ran stats through this whole thing, and on average, people have spent $30 a day at town. So, the record crowd at the roll-in, 650 cars, how many people come in these cars? Not everybody registers. I can't count on people. You do the math. That was a big day. Big day in this. This is a great aerial shot, and I wish this thing, you could see this a lot better, but to see the cars all the way from basically the levee all the way up to the west end of town. Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. And that's fantastic news. I mean, where we've dealt with this year and still stayed ahead, and with a restaurant to open again, it's gonna be great next year. Tim, from the county.
All right, well, thank you. So, my name's Tim Becker, I'm the Public Works Director for Sibley County. On November 16th, we opened up bids for our County Road Six project. We had six bidders, Mathewitz Construction, late-worthy low bid. The county can't afford the project, and Tim, we actually get our couple of permits that we're waiting for from the Army Corps of Engineers. We're hoping that they do show up in the month of December here, and then the county will award it. We're anticipating construction to begin probably in January, maybe February at the latest, and that's gonna be with, in regards to the tree removal, what we're gonna do is we're gonna take down all the trees, just cut them down, because that's required as part of the federal permit process. The roadway work will probably begin in April, maybe May, depending on how the spring weather proceeds. We're anticipating a two-year project. We'd like to get all the grading done in 2024, then we're gonna have a gravel surface road for the fall, for the winter of 2024 and 2025. And then the paving will be completed in 2025. That's our goal right now. We have a construction completion date around October 25th of 2025, just in case there's some bad weather or something comes up or flooding. When we opened up bids, we had three bid add-on alternatives. The first add-on was for grading a trail along the roadway. The second add-on was for putting drain out underneath the road, and the third add-on was actually putting a human servicing on that trail. Mathewitz bid came in around $20 million. It's actually... It's actually about $2.5 million cheaper than we were anticipating at county level. My recommendation to the board will be to actually do all three add-ons and we'll be shooting for being the deal. In 2025. Other work that we're kind of doing in the area, the County Road 6 portion from 19 coming up to the north end of the levee, we are planning on doing a mill and overlay on that and then also replacing some of the sidewalk stuff. We are anticipating that work to either be in 2025 or 2026, depending on how 6 actually goes. And then on the north end of the project, from 5-6 intersection all the way up to Trunk Highway 25 in Belle Plaine, that section of the road we're planning for either in 2026 or 2027. So really County Road 6 should have really nice pavement by 2027, 2028, all the way from 25 down to 19. That's my updates for County Road 6. Are there any questions, concerns?
But when you said it's, so in the winter months, will you be able to drive on that? You said it's a gravel road?
It's going to be a gravel road. We are going to keep it closed to the public just because, well, County Road 6 gets 1,000 vehicles a day and they will wreck the gravel road if we open it up to everybody. It'll be local traffic only, unfortunately.
What about Semstone?
You know, Semstone, their business, just like every landowner, they'll be able to use the road, so.
So the trucks that leave there, when you start that project, is it going to go half at a time? I believe Semstone's supposed to have some kind of access.
Yeah, they'll have access. They'll have access either to go towards south, towards Henderson or up towards County Road 12 and go that way. So they might be driving on the gravel road just like everybody else. We're not going to pave it just for them. We are anticipating the roadway to actually settle somewhere between an inch to two inches, just like Mendat's anticipating their road to settle because of the extreme bills. I mean, we are going to be building up that road anywhere from 3B to 5B in some spots. So during the winter months, we are looking at the roadway to settle inch, inch and a half. And we are taking that into our design a little bit, so.
And you'll have a better road.
Yeah. Well, yep.
Tim, would it be beneficial for us to reach out to our commissioners to say that we're in favor of all three of those acts or add-ons or is that?
You know, probably wouldn't hurt. You can tell them that you heard that, okay, we had a bid add-on alternative and you can voice your concerns. I did a workshop, whatever it was, we're going to have a with it for commissioners. And they all seem very open to doing all three add-ons. And we already presented our bid results to the state. They reviewed all the bid results and they're going to award us all the grant dollars from the 2020 legislative session and the 2023 ones. So that's good news.
Yes, that's amazing.
Yeah. The only thing we're working on yet is we still have to complete the DNR grants for the trail, which we can't do until we get our Army Corps permits, so. Because they won't even look at it until we have our permits, so.
You have to complete it in the sense of the paperwork that's recently.
The environmental documentation and stuff, which basically says you received our permits.
But the funding, the funding is still there.
The funding's still there, yep. We just need to execute the contracts again to meet that documentation, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your hard work, Tim.
Thanks.
Yes.
My pleasure.
I think too we have to go.
You're going to present?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so I'm here representing the Henderson, the Hummingbird Trail Association. I'm the president of the group. It's a representative organization with six representatives from various organizations and three at-large members. The at-large members are myself, Danielle Biskins, Martha Laverne. David Rice represents New Country School. Becky Pollak represents the High Center. Jeff Steiner represents the Chamber. Kelly Horning represents the Friends of Jessup. Keith represents the city. Tim represents the county. So this is essentially the group that will be managing the Hummingbird Trail, organizing it, making sure that it gets maintained, sponsoring various events, coordinating with other organizations in terms of trail use because we're assuming that a number of organizations will maybe have their own events along the trail. And we will fundraise for various enhancements of the trail over the next few years. Most of these people have been involved, plus a whole bunch of other people who've been in this room, have been part of the effort to raise the funding for the trail since we told the county way back three years ago that we would, we would try to arrange to get the funding to happen. And we have raised 1.7 million to this point, most of which came from the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission, which is essentially legacy funding from a lot of it. And we have an additional 250,000 from DNR local trails region are grabbed for, and we will be applying for more. The only thing we're short so far, and if Tim is right, that the alternates go through, the only thing we need to get together is a bridge across the High Island. And that's somewhere between $300,000 and $500,000. So we'll be working on that over the next few years. But I would have to say that this has been an effort from a lot of people and the collaboration with the city and the county has been absolutely terrific. It's really been quite an effort to make this happen, so. Any questions? We can expect events and all sorts of stuff that'll come out of the association. We've got two more years yet to get things organized and raise some funds for various things. I think the budget we're looking at is about $30,000 a year that the association will try to raise primarily for maintenance issues and upkeep and sponsoring of events and so on. So it's, so far, we haven't really hit a snag yet. And if we can pave it, that's fantastic. We did not expect that to happen in the first three or four years. So if that happens, it'll be a tremendous plus. We expect somewhere, the master plan, basically Jeff and I put that together after all these other folks contributed. The master plan is 65 pages long and has 130 attachments. If anybody wants that, talk to Jeff. We don't think Regional Parks Commission ever was able to open it up. So whatever they got from Tim and got from others, it worked. So it was quite the document that we had to produce. We expect somewhere up to 50,000 people of users a year. So this is real basic economic community development. And I think we learned through the design team process and all the other planning that took place by the city, we are not going to be doing industrial economic development. It's just not going to happen in the near future. And so really for the last 40 years, we've been trying to capitalize on two things that Keith has told us from the start. We have history and we have geography. And because of that, it completely changes the way we look at our city, our community, and where we're headed in the future. But we've been helped along the way. I think the design team that came here back in the 90s really got us to focus on historic preservation. And the design team that we just had has really tapped into all of the stuff that's going on. I've been telling people that we are, we have the highest number of nonprofits per capita of any city in Minnesota for sure, maybe in the United States. I think we have something like 22 nonprofits. And so, and they're all working really toward the same goal. And that is to develop our community into a fully functioning and inviting place to be, so. With that, if you have any complaints about the trail when it gets going, come and see one of these folks that are on the association. We'll try to fix it. Thanks.
Thank you, Doug.
Is the, is the, is the, the Greater Minnesota money, that's same as, that gets released after?
Yeah. And that all switches over really to the county. They're the recipient of the various grants.
But they can't get any of that until they get their DNR corporate permits.
All right. Now we're going to hear about the Hummingbird Center. Who's going to present for that? Doug, you can do that too?
Not necessarily. I think we can, there's several members here if they want to comment about it. Several officers, actually. Sarah, you want to talk a little bit about the whole idea of the Hummingbirds? I think that would be a question.
Okay. Well, I can talk to you a little bit about the garden. I'm Sarah Malco and I'm a longtime friend of Henderson. And I'm here today to report to you about the garden. Is this better? Okay. The approximate 12, 2,000 square foot garden is located in Benton Park, near the levee. It's west of the Ballard Garden and north of the creek. It's a flood prone area, as you all know. And the water table is typically high, which lends to what we call in horticulture, plants have wet feet in that situation, which isn't necessarily a good thing to keep most plants healthy and suitable for the Hummingbird Garden. In addition, that flood prone area has caused plenty of misery and heartache over the years as the garden has been lost to flooding several times and twice right before the hurrah event. We were still able to put it on with donations from garden centers and individuals, but it was, it was a major effort on behalf of a small group of volunteers. The setting is, of course, a municipal park. And so therefore, we need to abide by the pesticide and control policies dictated by the city. And overall, the garden is tended by, by over 300 volunteer hours. We don't have really good, solid numbers because we can't control entry and egress to the garden. But we notice they'll spend well in excess of, we have volunteer hours a year planting and maintaining it. And that it's visited by over 1,000 people annually and more than 300 people on the day of the hurrah this year. The donation box down there collects somewhere between $500 and $900 annually. So it's a good little kitty for us. The elements of the garden are plants and lots of them. Primarily, it features an annual display, which is something that's not often seen in rural Minnesota, rural America anymore, unless it's attached to a government or an educational institution. So that's kind of a neat thing to do an annual display. It also features perennials, some of which are pollinator plants, evergreen and deciduous shrubs and trees. And it's bordered by the native planted levee, which is a really nice feature for it. The levee and the flood control project are a major feature of the garden setting. We get lots of questions from maybe the hubby that's dragged along to the Hummingbird Garden about the size of the pond and how much water it moves. So it's part of the party. The garden also features seating, the pergola, an arbor, a chimney swift tower, bird feeders, bird feeding props, garden art, the donation box itself, paved paths, a flagpole, the event space for the banding and tours, memorials, two bridges, a garden shed, and a photography experience with lots of birds. Lots of birds, including hummingbirds and bees, bugs, frogs, and lots to enjoy for bird and garden enthusiasts. Most importantly, it's a teaching garden. We teach about food and home, hummingbirds, other birds, how to attract hummingbirds, hummingbird banding, rural Minnesota, as I mentioned, the flood control project, important information, plant information on a daily basis. We can coordinate texting among us if there are questions from visitors in the garden that are expressed to volunteers. And of course, at the hurrah event, we talk about pollinators. We do some prairie information, a display, and a display of annuals supported by perennials and of course, monarch butterflies. The reason why we teach, of course, is for the birds and all the birds that hunt the Henderson hurrah project. And we also teach to support banding. We trial and demonstrate plants and their use, use of food plants in an ornamental garden and for the environment and the planet. Lastly, we teach to attract visitors to the garden. The garden's enthusiasts and followers are people of all ages and from all walks of life. These people are homeowners and renters. Homeowners who garden typically have incomes in the upper five digits and especially appeals to middle-aged women. There's lots of money to be spent there. I know from experience. General hobbyists are part of the crowd, as are senior citizens. Photographers are part of the pack too, and they're amateurs and professionals looking to not only photograph birds, but flowers, plants, and people. This is a great crowd to attract because they publish photos on their social media and the garden gains some prominence that way for sure. The beauty of the garden lends well as a subject for social media platforms and marketing in general. University of Minnesota Master Gardeners and other clubs have also visited and been interested in the garden. I believe the garden should have a four-season aspect in order to really capitalize on marketing and habitat opportunities. And controlling entry will also aid us in funding and collecting numbers, which will be vital in our grant writing. We have a huge opportunity up on the hill with the St. Joseph Church property and its structures. I'll address the features there that lend well to the Hummingbird Garden, should we establish one on that side. It could be a garden designed for all four seasons. Protection there will be better than, we know, inside the city than out at the park. Drainage at the new site will be more sustainable for most plants, providing better culture and protection during all seasons. The flood threat largely would be eliminated, which has been a costly and labor-intensive venture. It would also offer several opportunities to incorporate the color red, like on a fence or a wall. That physical red color always attracts hummingbirds spring and fall during the heavy feeding seasons. And then, but we need a solid plan for design, roles, use, and access. Garden operation rules will be defined in order to protect the financial investment, design integrity, and the marketing asset. Know that it will take until the fourth year to have a robust result, but the first few years would not be a bust. It would just be a landscape and transition. The first year is critical and the site design and soil preparation will be critical to sustain that long-term landscape. It is possible that we could run both gardens, depending on how many volunteer hours we have. And I just wanted to examine some of the elements we could incorporate in this four-season garden and habitat. We could have an opportunity to install permanent art along with maybe a garden mascot that can be used in multiple ways as a marketing tool. More woody trees and shrubs could be part of the plan. And there are really some magnificent trees and shrubs already in place at St. Joseph's. The garden could incorporate an inclusive and accessible deck area and we could charge admission. There would be abundant opportunities. Lastly, let's address the very best part of the garden, its aesthetics. It's so much fun to be in a well-done garden. One sees something different every day or even every hour in the garden. It's a lovely way to spend any amount of time in any season. Today, the Hummingbird Garden is populated by casual strollers and intentional visitors. Everyone feels at ease. Children romp, play, and laugh. And observation is at its height with sounds, scents, colors, movement, animals, and insects. The garden brings people together and memories of people are shared through the memorials. Everyone smiles no matter how hot it is. And it's fun to observe people at the ballpark, running into friends, and even just seeing your favorite flower or color. Lots of people learn something new and that, my friends, is attached to memory. They remember the Henderson, the Hummingbird Garden in Henderson.
Most people know that we got a grant to plan the center and we hired Dana Velius to facilitate that entire process. But Dana will give the report on the center.
Okay?
I'll just be brief. We've had seven planning sessions. We wanted to really respect Dolores Hagan's vision. And so we crafted bylaws through that process. We've merged Dolores's original bylaws with a membership group. So it'll be a membership organization, a new seven member board. Some are here, Fred's here, Beth. Joe's here. And so the seven member board will be making those decisions on membership. So I think you could look for something in January probably as to what the membership dues might look like. There will be several levels. If you're familiar with the Nye Center, it will, I'm sure, have a similar level, maybe a family level, individual level, maybe seniors, maybe business. But the primary reason was with the opportunity for the potential for the St. Joseph's property, there was really a need to beef up both the bylaws and organizational structure and then the seven member board. So that seven member board could grow to 11, but right now that will be the decision making body for that property and then setting up the membership structure.
Any questions? That's a real brief summary.
Well, and I should explain too, that the Catholic Church, when we're talking about the use of the church as the Hummingbird Center, has offered the church and the hall to the city of Henderson for the sum of $30,000 for use by the Hummingbird Center. So something we will have to discuss at a council in an upcoming meeting. But that offer's been made. And I've actually signed an agreement based on the approval of the Henderson City Council.
And Hummingbird Group gave you a letter of intent to lease the property.
Have I seen that?
Yes.
Okay. It's on that stack of papers?
Well, it did because it responded to my email. But, you know, it was pretty general. We intend for it to be an educational opportunity for not only Hummingbirds, but basically the entire River Valley from an environmental standpoint.
Thank you. All right, now, did we hear about the splash pad?
For those of you who don't know us, Brooke Wentzoff and Cody Belder, we are with the Henderson Recreation Committee, which was another committee that came out of the Design Committee. So we're here today. We are, I think, are Henderson's newest five one one C three nonprofit. And we are working to develop recreation among Henderson. We have, our group consists of, I think, 13 members. We have an executive team of four, Amy's one of them, and then Aaron Arts. Most of what we, our group is, is really targeted at young families and recreational opportunities across all age groups. So you hear about the splash pad, but it's even, it's much bigger than that. So what our group has been working on is, if I can get to the slide, this plan. So this is a layout and what we've been working with the school board at Lisa or Henderson to allow the purchase of the land in the bottom parking lot of Hilltop for this project. And really the goal of it is to make a recreational destination that it can attract all ages. So within that project, we would add additional parking lot, a basketball court, a splash pad, and then use the existing playground structure. These are our initial plans. So you can see the white block is Hilltop, the existing structure below. And then we'd add a splash pad picnic shelter and then you can see the parking and basketball court. Our intent here is to really look at some of the other communities that have put splash pads in here. It's way cheaper than a pool, but it offers and attracts young families with a really low cost option in the summer. We, the city of Atwater, did a project very similar and is about a similar size of Henderson. It had, it took them three years, but they developed a similar size and structure. And it's been a huge hit across all of their community. They attract families from all over that area, similar to what we can do in Henderson. Here's kind of a close up of what the splash pad portion would look like. The shelter itself would have bathrooms, a mechanical room for the actual equipment for the splash pad. And then we are in consideration to add a small area where it could be future concessions as a way to fundraise. Our estimated budget for this project, after going through multiple rounds of negotiation, is about $350,000. The biggest portion of that is the equipment for the splash pad itself and the concrete associated with that. About $80,000 for that picnic shelter and then redoing that parking lot that's there as well as the basketball courts goes to about another $110,000. This would ultimately be a city park. And so we came to the city council meeting, I don't know, three months ago to really get insight and information from this group. And this is kind of what we took and will come back through December. In general, we know that there's water usage for this. How this system works is it has a button that turns on the splash pad and then you can set it to run from four to 15 or whatever minutes. And then the water will run, obviously, and it drives the different estimated water usage per day. We met with the Splash Pad in North Mankato as well as got some other insights from the actual company that does 90% of the splash pads in Minnesota to really come up with some of these estimates. As far as the actual equipment, from a maintenance perspective, it's really startup and winterization, which they think is relatively easy.
We had a meeting with James and the Splash Pad is probably our biggest option right now. Estimating between $15,000 and $20,000 a gallon a day. So that's where we're sitting right now. It's kind of a smaller splash pad, but that's where we're sitting. Cost wise, based on what the city charges for water, between $7500 per day to a splash pad. So it's a, it's a real challenge to be some options to.
Yeah.
I don't know if you have to go create free from some stone, right?
What's that?
A good fundraising. So we've been looking at lots of fundraising activities for this. Obviously, we talked a little bit about this city's DNR grant proposal. Part of that plan is for this to run close to the splash pad. So looking to kind of try and jump on that bandwagon. As well as we identified 20 to 30 other opportunities and foundations through corporate programs and other grant foundations that we intend to submit for. We just submitted our first for comp here yesterday, so that was exciting. As well as we intend to do some other fundraising activities. One of the things that they did at Atwater that was really successful is they had a sponsorship board that really attracts business sponsorship and credit for a lot of the businesses in Henderson that support, you know, all these great nonprofits. The other kind of idea that we came up with is similar to what you see at US Bank Stadium and some others is to actually attract fundraising through actually community members. So we are planning to launch a brick fundraiser where you can sponsor a brick. You can get your name on it, you can get your loved ones in loving memory. You can get every kid's name for Christmas, whatever you would like, as a way to not only help fund this, but also create personal ties to that space. And then we have some other kind of special events and fundraisers that we have planned for the next year. That's us. Any questions?
Brooke, does the water recirculate or?
It doesn't now.
So what happens to that water?
It goes into the sewer system. That's true.
Can we collect that? Can we have tanks and collect that and run it down the hill?
They do have a system where you can do that, but it is a maintenance headache and then you have to have department of health permits and stuff like that. With the flow through system, you don't need no permits or nothing.
We looked at a recirculating system and it's about another $100,000.
My question was, is could we somehow do something where we could tank some of the water and use that in the garden?
Sure. We could talk about it. I think it's a great idea.
Because those are, those tank systems are in a lot of public gardens now.
I'm not that familiar, but I'd love to have a conversation about it. Any other questions?
Would it be a user fee?
There will not, or we're not applying one at least to. It would be free to use. So one of the things that they do at Atwater that we really liked is they have actually a QR code kind of right around their splash pad and they, then you can scan it and make a voluntary contribution for using it. And they are still collecting money and their splash pad's been open since 2021. So that could be a way to get additional funding over the course of time, but at this point, it's planned to be free.
Is this something that we have every time of day in operation and like certain hours during the day? And it's like hard to determine how much water you would use.
It would be a, so the splash pad company can't deal with a May to first September timeframe. So it's open 70s a week and we figured probably 10:00 AM to 6:00 or 7:00, whatever we set that to. And then based on that, he gave us that kind of a design system of that's $50,000 a gallon a day. So, and I think we'd probably probably be using most days in Henderson, so.
And you set it specifically to operate during those hours or would it just?
Yep, for sure. Yep, so we would set it from 9:00 AM to 6:00 or 7:00, whatever hour we choose. And all times of hour, it would not be turned on, so.
We can set it to a lot of times, so maybe you'd have shorter time history in the week. And we had a lot of discussion among the young families of our group. And I personally was like, well, it kind of sucks to go get a button, hit a button, but every kid wants to hit the button.
Yeah.
So it's kind of. Any other questions? Go ahead.
I'm just thrilled from someone that's been involved in everything. So many of the stuff in town has been the same old people, the same old farts, doing the same thing for 30 years. And I just want to congratulate you as young people, at least what I consider young, for getting involved in dating the initiative. And I applaud you guys for stepping up and I hope this leads to much more future civic involvement. So thank you for getting involved.
I think they're still hoping we have to get across the water and stuff like that too. Because we're hoping to find out, it could be in 2024, but it's almost like looking like a 2025, sorry.
We welcome all membership and any ideas as well.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Want to talk about Allison's Park?
Hold on, Commissioner. That's still on the plan, whether the community wants to vote to fund it. For sales tax bill that was up to fund the campsite on Allison Park did pass, but this year's caveat to it was that it had to be approved by the community. It had to happen in a general election. So the next general election is this November. So that'll determine whether that 17 unit campsite gets officially approved.
And it is all tied together in one grant application too with other projects. All right, anybody want to speak on Bender Park? Anything for Saturday days?
I'm going to talk over the line if you guys want to.
Yeah, it's fine.
And Kirk's going to help me. Here we go. So I know a lot of people know what the lines do. We put this summary together a couple, or about a year ago. And I thought this was a great opportunity to kind of share some of the things that we're working on. Oh, and it's like. Better?
I'll check to make it a little bit easier.
Oh, my God. Oh, not that easy. Quite a meeting. Oh, here we go. Okay. So one of the things we obviously pride ourselves is around community support. For last year, we really supported Bender Park through concessions, field maintenance, the installation of a new scoreboard and sound system in partnership with the softball team. As well as just recently, we took the old scoreboard and moved that to the second field, had it refaced and installed, which was a huge investment and project for our team. We've also got new bleachers so that everybody doesn't have to sit on the sides of picnic tables and really made a lot of cleaning and storage efforts to kind of clean up everything within that concession stand. We kind of see the playgrounds, that equipment that we did, this is a funny picture to build, you know, but we added some equipment down at the downtown baseball. This past year, a couple of years, we've supported the Rollins with a beverage stand at Evolution. And through a grant, we're able to continue to provide live music. We've had great success in that over the years, just like the Roland has built over time. We've seen our numbers get better and better and a lot of people like to hear the diverse musics that we choose for that. And that is also in partnership with Tiger Baseball, so that was great. Everybody loves this project. I don't know if anybody's tried the pickleball courts, but this past summer, we opened pickleball courts and winter prior is the ice skating rink. So the pickleball nets are down and the ice skating rink will come at some point once we have some snow on ice. I don't know, we're not necessarily wishing for that, I guess, right now. And then the Easter egg hunt, which is kind of a fun event, as well as a downhill highway up on 19. We sponsored the open gym for the kids during the winter and lots of other various events. We do a ton of fundraising. Thank you for all that have come. The spaghetti feed, we have had licensed gambling at the Roadhouse and hope to have it again with Kelly, as well as down at Henderson Wine and Spirits, so kind of fundraising there. In 2022, I haven't gotten to 2023, but the Henderson Life Club donated over $40,000 to support our mission in our communities. This is just a subset of groups that we have supported. Any questions?
You guys do great work.
Yes.
Where that dovetails in somewhat here is all of our, all of these nonprofits that's here seeing here, hearing here, of course, the city owns Bender Park on Alford's Field. So far, it's been done with, the city puts the materials in, pays for the insurance, does whatever, but it's been maintained with volunteer or whatever. So long range finalizing, you may want to start thinking if there's going to need to be any transitions or doing whatever there. I've got, you know, Allison's Park pretty much is all city thing, but Bender Park is, or South Creek outstanding the same thing. And they're going to, they're going to be coming and putting together a proposal to do an expansion there. And Hilltop, I don't have that planned in front of you anymore, but for the last couple of years, we finally this spring finalized buying the baseball field. The city now owns the baseball field and the bus garage and compost site and, you know, whatever. I think from a baseball association standpoint, I'm on that board, Dana's on that board, Dana's here on that board. I think that's kind of it all, but I don't think we're looking at transitioning, but we're going to need to start figuring out some different things up there as far as maybe some things like that as to how we're going to staff stuff and do whatever. And I don't know if you two got any? And I don't know if you two guys have anything you want to throw in on Hilltop. But it's, those are, these recreational aspects that you're talking about. You've got, as Doug said, a record number of volunteer groups that throw out there and do some things. But on, on every one of those groups still, they need some back, backbone or they need, they need, they need some, some backstop. And that's basically what the city provides in all these places. I mean, the city pays all, pretty much insurance on all of these facilities, on all the properties, owns them all, does, you know, does whatever. So far, the community has greatly supported it. But just something to think about in both your short and long-range planning, how you're going to continue to maintain and operate these facilities because they do cost money. I think that's all I have.
Is that it?
Parts. Community building grounds, yeah, again, we, we haven't done much on those, on this, but, but.
Bathroom.
It's something, yeah, that's right. The new bathroom is all fixed up, so you need to go in there. Go ahead, if you're good. But probably by the end of this meeting, you maybe should have a serious discussion as to whether you're, you still want to continue to place some emphasis on historic and the grounds and the committees and all that kind of stuff. And if you do, how you want to, how you want to get there. The other notes I had on here, this AGT mend up plan, that ties to applying for, that ties to applying for the trail between, you want, Jeff, you want to pop up the other? The, the rest, did you have, did you get that? What, what Brooke referred to is, is, is our major grants that we're going to apply for. It might end up being $800,000 when everything is said and done with matching dollars and whatever. But really what it's going to do or what the attempt is going to be is to take all the aspects and the various things that you're, that you're talking, that you've been talking about tonight based on the comprehensive plan, based on the design plan, based on doing some things up at that nature trail park or whatever. But the whole green area where the trails and stuff are at, the trailheads, the various projects that we've got under, undergone right now, the splash pad, all of those things will, you know, will go, will go in there. We'll be able to use some matching stuff for some of the street projects and stuff we've done. We put the splash pad in, we'll be able to use some matching numbers for whatever, whatever they're, whatever they've got included in there. But, uh, like the bridge on the south end is going to be, or north end is going to be a big expense. But I mean, they haven't, they haven't done anything up in that part of the trail for many, many years. I mean, I don't know, probably hardly anybody in here probably even used it, I mean, from A Street to, to the end. You know, so, yeah. But yeah, there might still be people up there somewhere, right? But just, this is, if September, we'll, if you're going to go ahead and pursue this, we'll have to get approval and to apply for that $400,000, $400,000 grant. We'll include all of those various aspects. So, that I think I'm.
Well, all that being said, there's a couple of other things I really would like to see. I'd like to see heritage preservation come to the forefront again. And also the Minnesota River Center upstairs is languishing. And I'd really like to see that back up and running. It's a real asset, can be a real draw. Probably a revisioning of it as our founder has somewhat fallen out of favor with the historians. But I think there's a way to, to rewrite the, the story. All that being said.
Good on our project.
Who's that?
Tree Grant.
Oh, the Tree Grant. Tim?
Yeah. Just a quick update on tree grants. Terry, I'm not sure where he's at in here, went out and did a survey of all the ash trees in town.
Park Board, Ateer, Lucy, Randy, Steve, Terry, anybody, doesn't anybody else fit in?
I think we got a little bit of this here.
They're, they're on the city park.
So Terry went out, did a survey of all the trees in town. And I just want, would like him to kind of explain his process and how that went about. And then we'll talk a little bit more about what we're going to do next.
Well, it's a simple process. This dad started off with Matt Dork. He produced this earlier this summer. Did a quick survey of green ash in the city. As you may be aware, green ash is under attack, if you will, pretty much nationwide with Emerald Ash Forest. And it's just, you all remember Dutch Ome disease, well, this is going to be another wave, just come mad. So the idea was first off, the DNR and other agencies, I suppose, are starting to produce some funding for communities to take down older ash trees and replant newer, different types of trees, you know, more, more diverse types of trees. So I took Matt's data and he had an address and the deviated diameter of the tree at breast height. That's a forestry process. And then, and the number of trees that was on each particular property. And so what I did is I, I did a windshield survey. I did not go out measuring, you know, how far a tree was from a curb or, or anything like that. I just drove around town here the last few days. And using this list, I wound up coming up with this particular order. The green color is the large diameter trees. And there was about a dozen of those on the list. And they'll also be probably a higher priority to, to take down over time. The bigger the tree, the more expense, you know, that type of thing. Two of them, the one from our market in Yell here, I couldn't get, couldn't get added because it's up in the construction zone. And I didn't want to tangle with, with the equipment, that's why I'm not up there. The bottom line is I tried to differentiate that, this left-hand column, this one here. In my, in my visualization, it was yes, the tree is on public property. It's in a public right-of-way, it's between a sidewalk and a curb or where there's not any sidewalks or, or curves. And we've got a few streets like that in town. I looked at, said, yes, this tree looks like it's within 10 feet of the edge of that pavement. So some of those might need to have a little more finer tubes far as whether or not they're really present to public right-of-way or not. I kind of came up with this business here on the notes. And it's at the bottom, you scroll all the way up.
Right to the bottom.
Yeah. See the side notes there, they're set notes. I tried to break it down into this, what are the categories of, of trees that I saw? What, what were my observations? Were they 10 feet or less to the pavement? Were they greater than 10 feet to the pavement? Was the tree in a county or state right-of-way? So Highway 5th Street is an example there. From Main Street South, we saw an county route, a state highway right-of-way. Going north, that's a county right-of-way, on County 6. I don't know quite sure, or I'm not sure where the right-of-ways are. I did have some aerial photos to work with, but the, the line work on it is pretty iffy. Let's put it that way, it's hard to show the property numbers. Number four would be tree, there's no doubt the tree's on a city right-of-way. And then five would be catch-all. I'm not sure of the trees, if the whole tree is actually in a public right-of-way or not. And further, I'm, I think I know what a green ash looks like in the, in the winter times. I could be wrong. So I, I had some of that. I thought, well, if they just bear more attack. The, the number on the left coat, I created that number. And on the far right column, I created, that was my guide to the aerial photos that I wound up using, which I got here, but there's, and I'll give them to Tim and he can look them over, or anybody can look at them. But anyhow, we wound up with 12 larger trees, about 35 of that medium size and 26 of smaller ones. And that's eight to 15 inch diameters. We've got 26, 16 to 23 inch diameter and 24 to 27. And I think this is probably a, a really gross undercount. I mean, when you really stop and think about it, there's green ash all over the city, all over town. And this is only a first crack, I think, in trying to figure out which ones are on public property. If we start up thinking about all the trees that are on private property, I'm sure we're swampless now. Green ash is one of the most, I think it's the most common tree in Minnesota. So they're everywhere. And eventually they're going to be diseased and, and coming, creating a real problem for everybody. So, so this was just a real quick survey of where, based on the information that Matt provided, I tried to refine it just a little bit as to where the locations actually were. That's all I have.
Thanks. And Tim knows more about the, what the grant process.
Question, just a quick question. What's your observation on how many have got the disease already, 25, 30% or what?
I don't know, you know, I. I can answer that. There is going to be a dovetail sign on that because if you go to Safelane, if you paid attention to Terry Tom's white note, if you come to the sewer last year in October, they had Minnesota Park made from them and find one tree that had it. If you ask them to come and survey town, they're pretty much just going to say it's here, it's a matter of time. Once a tree gets it, the life expectancy is roughly the most five years. And we sewer as many dead ones that are completely deaf. So, and you're in between. So it, it's here. I mean, it's just a matter of how bad it is and the percentage of how many have it. They don't even look at that. They're just at the point of, how long is it going to take before they're all gone? Is really where they're at with the tree situation. The one good thing about this grant is it's an encompassing grant. It not only takes them down, it grinds the stump, it cleans it up, it plants a new tree, it gives you tree bags. It's a, it's a deal where the citizens need to realize it's actually a really good thing. And the amount of trees that, when I, this spring, when I looked at it, I, I felt that was pretty generous. You can see that it's got a lot of question marks that if it's private or not. The city of Henderson didn't have, you know, if it's 10 foot off the curb at that time or whatever. So when I went through it, I went through off of what we've done, say, in St. Peter, Lee Sewer and other towns for the grant process. And I was pretty generous because when you apply for the grant money, once they allocate that money to you, they definitely want you to spend it all. You can plant more trees than what you can take out. And I think the city just needs to come to an agreement on how they're going to proceed on public and private properties and to make sure that they use the money and can justify taking one tree over someone else's due distances or something, but.
This is, I took a little, but one of the things, could we delay some, some that are pretty, like my wife and I, we spend money on our ash tree, like 150, 200 bucks every other year. We've been injecting prolongates. And then I see in our, in Burnsville planted a bunch of ads, that's where I live. And it's all ash and they got a big problem on their main thoroughfare. But, where were they going? But, but I look at the private, you know, the city, okay, we got funds, we got access, we can do stuff, get grants. But that individual that can't afford to take down, pay $2,000 for a tree taken down. Where that I think should be in consideration because they're the ones, the disease is going to help spread faster because they're going to leave that tree fall. I mean, I've seen a couple that look like they're about ready to fall now. You know, so keep that in mind in your thought process, not just the public, but helping the private.
Well, the grant is here specifically for cities. I mean, that would have to be something the city council would have to deal with. But these grants are here for the properties only. They gave out six grants. After the third one, I got a team involved with Stephen and that's, we applied for the fourth, fifth and sixth one and they got two out of the last three. So, but I agree, there's a lot of problems and there's a lot of costs involved in the private sector. Be thankful you're not about playing, they're making the, they're making them pay for everything. I mean, and they're not even considering it. So we're over there on a daily basis and there's a lot of discombob.
Quick thought coming along, did we let anything out? All that excess water that's going to run up, is there some land nearby that can water some trees and start planting? And get some trees drilled to get replacements? Just to boost it up?
There's a couple tree plots in the van, one down with, one down with Lenny and I put a water tower.
Sure.
But the people that were doing that, I think they're.
If the houses get built back here on the other school property, maybe the, the owners back there will want to irrigate their lines or something.
Any more questions or comments? Nope.
Yeah, so he basically said it all right there. Basically, you know, we look at phasing like Matt was talking about. Do we, you know, does, does the city want to take all of these trees down at once? Or is this something that should be phased out over several years? We are getting for sure the first grant for those top 12 trees. The second grant that will be coming as well. Hopefully to take care of the remainder of those trees and also plant many more. But we should probably decide if all of those trees should come down at once or not. That'll have a decent effect on, you know, urban forestry and canopy, if you're to do that all at once. The second grant is also a bit more restrictive in that once those trees come down and the trees that go back in, those are state bond financed trees. And so they're restricted on what you can do with those trees for the next 37 years. So if you park that tree close to somewhere where you might have oak construction later on, there's a long, lengthy process to go through to move that tree or to, to take it down.
So, I heard right before, they're talking about maybe doing 93 and 19, 6. We're going to be planting new trees and we got to go through a bunch of BS.
Sounds like it might happen that way.
We may want to stay away from those.
That was, yep, that would be a, a good question to ask is, you know, 93, 6, along 19, are we going to take a pause on those for now? Keep them on that list obviously and postpone. That second grant goes all the way until the end of 2027. We can use dollars all the way to the end there. So it's, it's something to definitely consider and to think about. I think that's all I have.
You can, you can take them, you can take them down. If you can take a tree down, do you have to replace it, I mean, right-of-way?
In the same spot? Is that what you mean?
I, Derek, I don't see any specific language to that exactly. But it, it does state that once the tree comes down and a new tree goes in, I mean, you have to notify, it has to be recorded at city, county, that that tree is in that specific location where you planted it. And so, and that's partly, or a big part of why the public versus private really needs to be considered because one, you know, we want to make sure that they're definitely going back onto public land because of those restrictions.
What happens if the tree dies? When you plant it? What happens if the tree dies?
If the tree dies, you put it back, another one at city cost.
At the city cost, yes.
They say what kind of tree do you have planted or what?
Yes, there's a, there's a long list and I can get that to anybody if they want, of all the trees that are allowed. And then that also just depends on the time of year when you buy those trees and what's available at that time. But it's, I think there's 20 or so trees on there that can be chosen from.
Are they replaced with a certain diameter tree?
Yes, there's requirements on the size of the tree that has to go in, maximum size and minimum size.
It's 20 when the, about something.
Are there different trees that are better for having plants? This, I'm off topic, we can do this another time, because that might be, yeah, okay.
All right, is that it?
Yeah.
All right. The only thing I want to say as we face.
The only thing I want to say, as we basically conclude, is Lon Berberich will be leaving us sometime in 2024. We've talked in the past of a second position, somebody to work with Tim. What I would like to see, and I want the council to discuss it, is that we do add that person, but we add them as a, part of their duties would be to facilitate for and, and help the nonprofits in their endeavors. We have a lot of stuff you won't see anywhere else in the state of Minnesota for a city this size, and in order to accomplish what we propose to accomplish, it's gonna take a lot of effort, and it's gonna take a lot of expertise. I would like to see that second position be responsible for helping the nonprofits realize their ambitions. So, food to talk, we're not gonna do it tonight, we have city council meetings to do that. Is there anybody else that wants to address the council board?
Yes, I would just like to say that I want to thank the mayor and each and every one of the council members for doing this tonight, because what you see here tonight, you hear about the Roadhouse, the Hummingbird housing, so on and so forth, it's all positivity, and, you know, without getting into it, somebody from the outside that may be looking at that, it might be from Henderson's site, all you've seen on there, all winter it seems like, is negativity, and that's not what we're all about, and this is a prime example of the positivity in the, in the community, and I think as individuals, we need to spread that positivity. So thank you for doing this, and hopefully the work fits up.
Thank you, Dennis.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, there happened to be a meeting last night, and the comment, very last comment made by the gentleman is get the Roadhouse open. Henderson always has something going on, always interesting, a pleasant place to visit, and we come for food, too. Just came all of a, a discussion in a private group, so.
Yeah, we got a lot of these comments, I was a little nervous putting it out there, but thanks for everyone that made a comment that was very encouraging, so we were very proud to see that.
Well, Henderson's Main Street needs that business operation, there's no doubt.
Yeah.
And the chamber's looking for ideas to try to support the city during our closure times, to try to have some events besides the roadhouse to bring people here.
Yeah, that's good.
All right.
Doug? And from the Henderson Community Foundation, and it's that time of year when we have to look at our holiday lighting, there is a fund, you know, they have an adult fund, they also have a special fund, which would buy new holiday lighting by the time we, 2028 or whatever it is, when we get Main Street lights that are new and so on. I think we estimated, when we created that fund, about twelve thousand, it's been stuck at twenty-two hundred dollars for about the last four years, so as it gets closer to 2028, we'll have to really make a push to get some, some new lighting as well.
The existing Christmas lights are due to be set up on Thursday, so whichever ones work, we'll make it, which probably aren't very many. There we are. Thanks, everyone, for coming. We should hold this once a month.